Now I let it go out, it's getting long. And my head's all scared of it. It was like... It took several years.
So far down the highway.
So you're on the same as different. So it was long since I was there. It's just a bug. I guess you'd catch that in the old cars. He drove video moves.
Well, would have.
Hello, my friend. Good, how are you?
You'll find you'll get some slack if I don't push that button on that microphone first.
I did say turn your mic over. That's what they're telling me to do is tell them, you know?
And Miss Pedro was showing the thing and I said, please turn it which button I gotta push. The first button I don't want Jerry to say.
I didn't tell you why.
Hey, Brooke House.
Good seeing you.
He wasn't.
So it's okay. A, where was this one? Are we gonna have?
We did, yeah. So we went out and we get on the phone.
Time to spell.
How are you, sir?
Good. You got some. Very fair. Is that right? They were all... I wouldn't think so. He didn't...
He put you in another zone.
It's like...
Leave his face. What happened? That's right. Chips in here? Yeah, we're trying, yeah.
Yeah, but what's silly in our life at all is all right. Hair done, nails done, all sorts of bad. David himself. That's what started.
Everything's come together.
Let's do it. Wow, they do this kind of thing. We have sponsors to...
Yeah, so... We're working on it. It wasn't hold on. What did you got? Yes. Yeah, so that's what we're working on. Then... So, good news. You can stand on the bench. What is I really appreciate? So refunding the signature.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
That's what, that's what we're... Very... We're reaching for the children. You said it. She hardly thought the porch, so they would have...
Yeah. So... All right. All right. Okay. All right. It's a beautiful place.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call this March 3rd, 2020 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. We don't have our usual introductory video for the meeting this evening. So I want to welcome you all and thank you all for attending. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to recognize the people and the communities that have been impacted last night by violent and devastating storms in central Tennessee. At this time, at least 22 of our neighbors in Tennessee have been confirmed to have died, 150 have been hospitalized, and in Nashville alone, more than 48 buildings have collapsed. So please join us in a moment of silence to recognize the families and communities that are hurting right now and to offer a silent prayer, a reflection on how we can help them in their healing and recovery. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Before we begin our meeting, I want to announce that we have parking validation for any folks who are attending the meeting this evening who parked in the county's parking facility next door or who use transit to travel to the meeting. You can get validation from one of our officers who is with us this evening. Feel free to see them on the way out. We want to begin our meeting this evening with a recognition of County Commissioner Mike Fryer. So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Presley to lead us in this, and I think we're all gonna join him down, down front.
Brenda Christie, Mr. Engel. Brenda Christie, we have a plaque here that is a small token of what Mike Fryer meant to Buncombe County. You know all the days he'd come home, kitchen table stacked up three foot high with paperwork he brought home? He was one of the few people, Commissioner, that probably worked 80 hours a week. If he wasn't aggravating everybody here 40 hours, he was aggravating here at home. And I've heard y'all's conversations at night while me and Fryer was talking about why I didn't do this or why somebody else done something. So we can talk about him forever. But this plaque presented to you, Mike Fryer, Buncombe County Board of Commissioner, 2012 to 2020. A servant to the people of Buncombe County and dedicated member of the Board of Commission. We are forever grateful. Quote from Mike Fryer, and we all know it and we've heard it so many times, but I want to read it. "I want to work for the people of my district. I want to work for the people of the whole county. I'm a dollar and cents type person, and I'm gonna fight for the dollars and cents. I love Buncombe County and appreciate the people of Buncombe County. Mike Fryer." Brenda, with honor, I want to present this to you and Christie. Yeah, Brenda, I've heard you talk.
I appreciate this. My family appreciate this. And you and Mike appreciate this. And I'd also like to say that we appreciate the nice video that was put together at the county, by the county staff, and what you said at the memorial service. So we appreciate you and thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Presley. All right, the next item on our agenda is the swearing in of our, the new county commissioner to fill the vacancy that we have in the district for the remainder of Commissioner Fryer's term. And so we have Jerry Meehan with us, who would like to ask to come up, and Mr. Anthony Penland will join him. And, Mr. Penland, feel free to invite anyone else who you'd like to ask to join you in the swearing in as well.
Chairman Newman and Commissioners, one of the things that I've been able to do over my 16 years as Mayor of Woodville is occasionally administer the oath of office to a law enforcement officer or to even one of our new elected aldermen. And I always considered that an honor. Today, I get to... Today, I get to take another step above that and swear in our newest commissioner, who I consider this to be an extreme honor, and I am so impressed that Anthony asked me to do this. So with that, Anthony, are you ready? I'm going to read the oath of office, and as I read it, you can repeat after me. I pronounce your name.
I, Anthony Penland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
I'll support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Commissioner for the County of Buncombe.
As Commissioner for the County of Buncombe.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
All right, Commissioner Penland, on behalf of all the county commissioners, congratulations on your appointment, and we look forward to working with you for the remainder of 2020. So is there anything else you'd like to say before we kind of move on to the next items? Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And thank you all for joining us for this evening. All right, I need to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, and to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the commission at this meeting. All right, we now come to the consent agenda.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring up about our board of adjustments that we've got tonight. I have here, we've got six of them that's going to be coming off. I think three of them are already, and so if we could put off that and interview all of them, we're going to be replacing six here instead of one day and six more in the next month or so. I have a copy here.
So your recommendation is to interview, can you repeat your recommendation?
Yeah. Pull these off we've got tonight, the one that we need to, and just interview every how many we've got. We've still got a deadline of what, is it two weeks for the deadline, Lamar?
Yes, the deadline for the two that are currently on there is March the 6th. So that won't be two weeks, but.
March 6th?
Yes.
And none of the six can be reappointed, they've already went their whole term. So I suggest we wait and interview all of them at one time.
That's a good recommendation. Any comments on that? All right, I think that's a good suggestion. It sounds like everyone's on the same page. All right. Commissioner Veltzer, you had a couple of items you wanted to bring up.
Chairman, there's quite a bit on the consent agenda, and the last two are capital, budget amendments for school capital needs, and I'd like to, we don't have to pull those to go into the main, to the, maybe we leave them in consent, but I'd like to have both of them explained to the people at home or in the audience, if you're using your electrical device, you can click on the ordinance and see the items that are included. And you can summarize just a few of those things if you want to, that's in there, but I just want to make sure that people understand that that is funded by, that construction is funded by a sales tax, and I just want to make sure that people understood that and that they saw some of the things that have been, that are being done at the schools. I think it's important.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
So I'm Jennifer Barnett with Budget. So the two budget amendments that Commissioner Veltzer is referencing is for two of our capital projects funds. One is specific to a share of the Article 39 sales tax, which is dedicated to fund school capital projects. And Fund 326 are those projects that are identified, submitted by those school systems, so Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools, to the School Capital Fund Commission. The School Capital Fund Commission reviews those requests and recommends priority of funding those particular projects with the sales tax proceeds. The budget amendment on for this evening are projects that have been identified as completed and are ready to be closed off of our accounting books. And Commissioner Veltzer asked for a few of those. Emma Elementary School Fire Alarm System, Valley Springs Middle School Roofing, WD Williams Elementary School Roofing, Montford School Critical Property, Irwin Roberson Intermediate Schools Project, North Buncombe High School Gym Bleachers, and Owen High School Track Replacement. So there were a considerable number of projects that have been on the books and for a few cycles and are ready to be closed. The total amount for those projects was $11,345,392. Out of those projects, the actuals came in under budget in a total of $161,257,000, and those dollars will go back to the School Capital Fund Commission for identification of repurposing those dollars.
Thank you. I just wanted everybody to see how that's spread across the county and the city and how there's equity in those dollars and replacement of them, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. I want to add some language on the item of the request to waive occupancy tax penalty for the Boat Catcher Motel. And the reason is that we've been advised, we have to give a specific reason that the penalty is being waived. The reason is that there was a medical emergency of a family member, and the Boat Catcher Motel has never requested a waiver before. They fully paid everything, it was just a very minor, it's just overdue by a very small amount of time. So we needed to add that language to the motion. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with that additional language on that particular item.
Second.
Are there any questions from any members of the public about any items on the consent agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so I believe next we come to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Commissioner. With the outbreak of coronavirus in the United States and now specifically in North Carolina, I want to ask Dr. Mullendorf, our Medical Director, and Fletcher Trove, our Preparedness Director, to just give you a quick briefing on what the county is doing to be prepared for COVID-19 in our community.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So the health and safety of our community are our number one priority, of course, and while we have no confirmed cases of the coronavirus disease 2019, commonly known now as COVID-19 in Buncombe County, you may have heard that this afternoon, North Carolina announced that we do have the first case, and Wake County resident. And so, again, today's announcement represents just an isolated case. This does not mean that there is widespread community outbreak of COVID-19 in North Carolina. And I would say that we've been, for the last several weeks, preparing, following guidance, of course, from the CDC and the State Division of Public Health. Public health in this country is multi-layered, right? So we have the federal CDC sending information to the state, who then sends it out to the local health departments. And the goal is to detect and contain cases of the virus in the United States. The greatest risk remains in people who have traveled to areas with widespread ongoing transmission, which the CDC defines as travel to certain areas, to China, to Iran, Italy, Japan, and South Korea at this time. And we know this is an ever-evolving situation, right? Every day, there's new reports and new cases identified, and it's, over the last several days in the United States, different states. So I would just encourage people to pay attention to reputable sources of information. The CDC is where I'm directing people to go. And in our community, over the last several weeks, we've been working with multiple partners. So information is being shared with healthcare providers, health systems, schools, universities, childcare facilities, employers, the general public, what do they need to know in order to prevent and minimize the spread of this infection, should it make it into our community? And I'll let Fletch talk a little further about specific preparedness activities that we're involved in, but I'm available for questions after.
Good evening. I'm Fletcher Trove, the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator. As Dr. Mullendorf said, this is a constantly evolving situation. So one thing we've done is move our county epidemiology team into a weekly operational cycle. We've also, over the last couple of weeks, greatly expanded involvement in the epidemiology team to include both city and county school representation, the city of Asheville, the airport, and local hospitals. What we're doing there is digesting the latest updates and guidance from the CDC and planning how to push it out to the community. We're reviewing our response plans and adapting them to combat this specific threat. Plans we're looking at include our All Hazards Base Plan, our High Consequent Pathogen Plan, our Continuity of Operations Plan, and our Isolation and Quarantine Plan. We've also set a weekly media availability to speak specifically to this COVID-19 response, which we established last week and meets on Thursdays at 2:30. We've also been working closely with Taylor Emergency Management to put together a proposal for Avril to establish a formal JIC, a Joint Information Center, to help us coordinate all communications between media, the public, and public health in the county to filter in our requests and make sure we have one solid unified voice in our response. To that end, a couple of things we've established to help us gather information from the public is we've made a new email account available, that's ready@buncomcounty.org, R-E-A-D-Y@buncomcounty.org, and that's to filter non-medical questions that the public might have about how to prepare for COVID-19, questions such as maybe businesses have questions about how to prepare their staff, or a home might have questions, what kind of supplies to stock up on. And I also just want to talk on some simple steps that everyone can take to help this community combat any influenza-like illness. Starting off, everybody can start these, developing these habits now. Making sure we're washing our hands, washing your hands thoroughly, at least for 20 seconds with warm water and soap, making sure you get between your fingers and the back of the hands. Trying to be aware of how much we touch our face and decrease the, catch yourself when you're touching your face. Practice good cough and sneeze etiquette, covering your coughs and sneezes. Stay at home if you're sick, and encouraging others to stay home and go home if they're sick. Increase the frequency that we're cleaning high-contact surfaces, such as doorknobs, telephones, work desks. Practice social distancing, can make a informed decision whether you're going out in public, particularly indoors, and if you need to for work or other reasons, try to maintain at least three feet between your face and another face. Consider, you know, maybe not shaking hands for a while, but you know, friendly nod or maybe a friendly elbow bump. And to reiterate one more time, make sure we're washing our hands. Finally, things families can do at home to get ready is think about what will you do with your kids if schools might be shut down for a month? What kind of non-perishable goods do you have at home? Do you have enough to last for two or three weeks? Do you have toilet paper on hand? Food for your dogs? Are you stocked up on your prescription medicines?
Thank you. All right, thank you. Ms. Pender, I appreciate you giving an update and asking some of our professional staff to be here, as you did to provide the initial update on this. I think this is going to be, you know, this, as folks have said, this is an unpredictable kind of issue that we're facing, and we don't know exactly how it'll play out. But I appreciate this initial update, and I think that it would be good for us to have regular updates on this, and perhaps our next plan to have some further discussion at our next meeting as well. So thank you all for being here tonight. We look forward to continuing the discussion about what we as a community can do and also what the county will be preparing to do to address this, you know, this unfolding new illness that our country and different countries are facing. So thank you for being here. All right. Ms. Pender, anything else under County Manager Report? All right. The next item on our agenda under Old Business is a resolution for the issuance of the 2020 Limited Obligation Bonds for County and Public School Capital Projects. And Don Ward will present the item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. All right, so I'm going to go through this resolution. This is related to the resolution that we had at the last meeting. This is related to the resolution that we had at the last meeting. Maybe? All right, Max, where's the button to turn this on? I think? Hold on. Hold on.
I'll get it.
Technology, it's awesome. All right. All right. So the approving resolution for the issuance of the 2020 logs ratifies the authorization from the preliminary resolution, which is what I gave you at the last meeting. It also authorizes the Chairman, County Manager, and Finance Director to deliver the official statement, which is the final bond document that gives us all the information, the amortization schedules, all that sort of stuff. It approves the financing of the projects and refinancing of the identified debt issues. It also directs the same group of people to complete the financing documents, which includes our contract purchase, ESCO agreements, letter of representation, the agency agreements with the school districts. And then it designates the three of us to act as the representatives on behalf of the county for this transaction. So the anticipated bond issue, I'm going to give you a reminder on this, is it will not exceed $212 million. There's new debt, which we have gone and looked at the projects again, so now we got 12 million of county projects and approximately 22 million of city and school projects. And then those projects were already approved in the 2018 and 2019 budgets, and the School Capital Commission approved all the school projects. Thank you. The refinancing is not to exceed 172.5 million, and these are the issues that we're talking about, the 2009 As, the 10 A and B, the 12 As, the 14th A and B, and then the 2015 Logs. And as of the time of doing this slide, we are at about 20 and a half million over the next 15 years of savings. If you recall, last time, we were at 14 and a half, so the market's greatly improved on, due to the coronavirus, one plus for us. Go to the next slide, please. And this is a slide that shows the actual savings by year and by issue, because I know this question came up at the last one. So as you can see, I mean, we are averaging well over a million and a half savings over the next 15 years. Go to the next slide. And then this is the list of projects as a reminder of what we will be financing. You see the library is the big one on here, and they've got the courthouse, detention seven. Next slide. Don, thank you. City schools projects, you've got the ROTC demolition, hall Fletcher replacement, hall Fletcher restrooms, still not working. Buncombe County school projects, and none of these have changed from the last time I presented it. Next one, please. Buncombe County school, next one. And then this is both school districts, so we have the radio upgrade, the security assessment, and then an engineering study for the radio upgrade. Next one, please. So the next steps, we had a phone call earlier today with the LGC. They went over our application and everything. They had no questions for us. They were satisfied with everything.
Don, share what the LGC is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me use those acronyms, please.
The Local Government Commission. In North Carolina, in order for us to even consider issuing debt, we have to get permission from the Local Government Commission, the LGC. We have to file application with them. We have to go through a lot of different meetings with them for them to look at our projects and make sure that they're actual valuable projects to the community before we even get to this point where we're talking to you. So we had our final call with them today, and they have approved our application, so now we can move forward. We had a credit rating agency meeting last week, and our chairman joined us, our county manager, our assistant county managers. The rating agencies, Moody's and Standards and Poor's came in. They went through a lot of information that we provided them. We gave them a tour of the county, talked about the projects. We should be getting our rating agency ratings back somewhere around March 13th, and then, and we anticipate those to be reaffirmed as to what our ratings are, we're AAA rating. And then on 3/26, we will go to market and sell the bonds. And then sometime in April, we will have a big signing party where we'll close on all the documents and put this thing to bed. Next slide. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you.
So can you just do a quick conversation on the logic to going back and doing a 2009, you know, issuance, paying it off and saving money on that when we don't have as much of that left to pay off? And how much it can, you know, how that works in, just making that decision overall?
Sure. One of the things we work, we do is we work with our finance advisor, which is DAP report. We look at what is our net present value savings on each of our issues? We discuss whether it makes sense to issue or reissue, refinance, the bonds. General guideline is three to five percent is a good savings. We were achieving anywhere from eight to 15% savings on the very series, so it just made a lot of sense to refinance those, take advantage of the lower interest rate markets, and then use that savings to offset our current debt service. And then it'll also put us in a good position when we come back next year or the year after with more school capital projects, and that savings will help us and we won't have as much debt service payments.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in second to approve the resolution for the issuance of the 2020 limited obligation bonds for county and public school capital projects. We've talked about this a few times before, and, you know, this is a big-ticket item. I don't know if there's any controversy around it, but I think it'd be appropriate to just ask if anyone in the public would wish to ask about it, just in light of the significant taxpayer investments involved. So are there any members of the public who would wish to comment? Yes, sir.
I thank you for the presentation. And as I went through this before I came to the meeting today, something jumped out at me, $20 million. And I heard something said about saving money, and I appreciate that, because I think that 20 million, in the honor of what we talked about with Mike tonight, asking about dollars and cents, that that 20 million either should go to our existing debt, our reduction in tax for the taxpayers. If we take that 20 million savings and spend it, all we're doing is digging a hole for ourselves and not looking after us that pay the bill. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Warren. Okay, next up, New Business is discussion of secondary public safety answering point and associated budget amendment.
Good evening. I'm Mark Haslam. I'm the Buncombe County 911 Manager. I sent some information on the third addendum to the intergovernmental agreement with Asheville City around our 911 center. The original intergovernmental agreement was signed in 2003. It was to establish a consolidated public safety communication center by 2006. The first addendum to that agreement was signed in 2006 to extend that by one year. The second addendum was signed in 2009. That established a joint agreement for operations and also made the county responsible for the cost of all equipment and maintenance to answer and dispatch 911 within the center. In 2016, the North Carolina 911 Board determined that we were not a consolidated center, we were a co-located center. That means that ultimately, our expenses have been reported as one group and now had to be reported per agency. In fiscal '19, the cost for the Asheville City Police Department to answer and dispatch 911 calls was $178,000. Zero percent of these expenses were eligible for reimbursement from the state. Buncombe County is required to cover the entire cost from the general fund. Moving forward, if Asheville City were to become a secondary public safety answering point or PISA, their funding will be determined by this formula. The number of 911 calls that Buncombe County takes in a year. You also have to determine the total of reported expenditures for Buncombe County. Those expenditures are then divided by the total of 911 calls, and that will establish a per-call rate for the year. That per-call rate is then multiplied by the number of calls that Asheville City takes on 911. Next. So in fiscal '19, that example looks like this. Buncombe County took 155,000 911 calls. We recorded a total of $565,000 in expenditures. Our expenditures divided by those 911 calls would establish a per-call rate of $3.65. Asheville City took 38,000 911 calls. That 38,000, at that per-call rate, comes out to estimated secondary funding of $140,000. So we spent $178,000 and could have been reimbursed for $140,000. Addendum number three allows Buncombe County to be reimbursed for money that we're already paying for equipment used by Asheville Police Department Communications. The City of Asheville will become a secondary PISA, and the North Carolina 911 Board will transfer secondary PISA funding to the county to cover those costs. Asheville City Council approved this addendum on January 28th, 2020, and our requested action is to approve the third addendum that establishes the City of Asheville as a secondary PISA. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. How did you all come across the issue and determine that we needed to save the money and bring it to us to present it to us? How did this evolve?
So every year, we're required to report our expenditures to the state, and that has gone on as we were combined and as we weren't. We have merged two groups out of that center this year, so our reports changed. We have a county report essentially and a city report. And that $178,000 is from that city report that we then discussed with the state.
Okay, thanks. All about saving $140,000.
I'm still not clear on, you said the $178,000 we couldn't be reimbursed for, from the 9/11 funds, 911 funds?
Correct.
Why? I'm not clear on that.
Okay. The funding for a secondary center means you have to officially be established as a secondary center first. That is the piece right now that is missing. So with this third addendum, and once we submit that addendum and the signed paperwork to the North Carolina 911 Board, that will allow Asheville City to be named an official secondary center, which then releases that funding. But up until now, that has not occurred.
Why didn't we catch that before now?
I think it's a combination of things. Originally, when we were consolidated and reporting our expenditures as consolidated, secondary PSAs did not exist in North Carolina, so it wasn't an issue when this began. It became an issue over time, and this is us trying to address that now and make it right.
Right.
So we're going to get the 140, once, we won't get that now. So we won't go back. We, it said that we were to maintain equipment. Is that 178? Did we buy equipment, or we maintain, or is that, what is that 178? What did we buy for 178,000?
So it's for both. It's for the purchasing of any equipment they need to answer and dispatch 911, as well as the maintenance cost for that same equipment per year.
So it was maintaining the equipment, because, but the way it said is almost like it was, that's what it cost them to take 911 calls. So we did buy equipment and we maintained the equipment, plan to do that.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions, or is there a motion?
So I'll move approval of the resolution. That's what we need to approach tonight, establishing the PISA. Is that right? PISA.
Yes, sir. That's it.
All right. There's a motion in second to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of addendum number three to the intergovernmental agreement between the city and county dated September 2nd to February 3 regarding the Joint 911 Call Center. That's the full title of the resolution.
Turn your mic on.
Any further discussion from the board? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Did you approve the budget amendment as well?
I'm sorry, I thought you said the budget amendment wasn't included in it. We need a separate budget amendment. We also need a motion for a budget amendment.
Yes, sir. That's why I brought a separate resolution to the board, because it wasn't included in this.
Hold your mic up.
All right. Make a motion over there, Commissioner Penland. I'll let you do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Last item in our new business is a report on the comprehensive plan. Nathan Pennington will present the item.
Over to you. Commissioner Penland, welcome, and members of the public. My name is Nathan Pennington, Land Director for the County. Next slide, please. So we wanted to bring to you tonight just a brief presentation as we make a request to let in R and P, request for proposals for the comprehensive plan. In terms of the comprehensive planning for the county, there's two key dates you need to be aware of. One is 1998. That was the formation of the county's first comprehensive land use plan. Secondly, our most current comprehensive land use plan was updated in 2013. That's this document here. Specifically for our community as ourself, we know we're popular, we're a gateway community, obviously. It's a springboard for people movement. People are coming in, people are leaving, residents are coming for services or a regional hub. We're definitely popular, we're also in the midst of a development movement. With that being said, we have certain things we have to plan for in a gateway community, given our popularity and some of our constraints, including the protected bridges, our steep slopes, our limited infrastructure. Go ahead to the next slide. In the county itself, we have some unique constraints that you may not find in other main street communities across the United States. Obviously, we're a tourist draw. We have the same thing that draws folks, places like Nashville and Charleston, Florida Keys, and other places like that. We definitely have uniqueness here. At the same time, we have some interesting areas that other places don't. The Ivy Watershed and the Northeast Quadrant of the county. We have the Peska National Forest. We have the Blue Ridge Parkway. We have the areas in yellow, which represent the zoning overlays, which we all agree that's something we definitely want to protect with our steep slopes and our protected bridges. We also have some very rich farmland in the upper corners of Sandy Much, Lester. We have areas that we've conserved over the years, we've made an attempt to sort of balance the needs of our residents and our development community, our tourists, everyone. We also have a number of flood plain areas, the Swan and O, and the French Broad, numerous tributaries, trout waters, things that draw people in from all across the country. Go ahead to the next slide. This is just a, sort of a look in time, given that development constraint map. And this is already dated. This is 2018. This is a heat map that just shows some of the development areas in the county. Obviously, some of the more developable areas follow those infrastructure corridors in the French Broad and Swan and O Valleys. Go ahead to the next slide. So if you look at it from an infrastructure perspective, these are just parcels that are within 100 feet of, say, water and sewer lines. Obviously, the big, large, green area south of Asheville is the building or state, likely not going to see much development there. But the areas surrounding the municipalities themselves, six in total, are the areas where you see the greatest potential. Excellent. Case in point, on your left, on the former ETJ areas, these were abolished by active general assembly in 2012 and 2013. Those are Weaverville and Asheville, unique to the area considering that only three ETJs were abolished across the state. The third one's been, so two reside in the county. The third one's been. So two reside in the county. To your right, the bigger picture, the zoning map simply follows some of the more urban areas of the county itself. The remainder of the areas were rural in nature. So therefore, you see that it has limited potential. A lot of those folks out there are unseptic and wells. So you have larger traps. You have steeper slopes. Go ahead to the next slide. So why create a comprehensive plan? Well, it's a chance for the community to have a conversation on how we want to grow in the future. It's a chance for us to put a vision forward about what's important to us. Obviously, the conversation here is all about land, 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 and the competition for land. There's competition for residential, institutional. There's competition for economic development. There's a competition to make sure that we preserve environmentally sensitive areas. So what do we need to do? Well, we can't automatically create solutions to our problems. We can't simply build our way out of the problem as it relates to things like affordable housing. We can't build a network of new roads without ease with these. So we have to innovate. So when you cannot automatically create, you innovate. So since we have such unique challenges, we, given our popularity, topography, limited infrastructure, we'll need to customize a plan to fit our area and balance the needs of our residents, tourists, development, former ETJ areas, environmentally sensitive areas, and programs like affordable housing, transportation. Land, obviously, is our most precious commodity, and we need to be very careful so that we fit in the full spectrum of residential, institutional, employment, economic development, and other opportunities. Go ahead to the next slide. The reason now that we're coming forward to you is you have to do as much pre-planning the plan as you do actually creating the plan itself. So let's talk for a minute where we are in time. And let's talk for a minute about what are some of the differences between what we've done thus far with the strategic plan versus what we're doing as a comprehensive plan. I'm gonna read you a couple of statements very quickly from Dr. Gary Cooper, an emeritus professor with App State University. He succinctly put together a sort of a citizen's guide, how-to. He says, "A good, clearly articulated plan forms the basis of a community's vision and its future. A good plan ensures that a community can provide services. A good planning process involves a wide variety of citizens and interests." Comprehensive planning, the larger of the three circles, is the preparation of a plan with a broad scope involving a range of subjects from land use to infrastructure and housing for a target timeframe usually 15 to 20 years or so. A strategic plan, a shorter-term look into the future where priorities are established and a specific action plan is prepared to address these priorities. Standalone plans themselves, examples may be, say, an aging plan. But a comprehensive plan can form a basis in citizens, the elected officials, a basis for making a decision. So if it's something we want to support, we should probably include a component in the comprehensive plan. So that being said, tonight, we are asking for the ability to go ahead and release a request for proposals out to the consulting community so that we can get an idea of what they come back with in terms of a budget. This is not a budget request. That follows as part of the capital improvement plan, and that's gonna follow into the budget process itself. We need enough time to get this request for proposals out to see what they come back with and make sure that we have somebody that can work with us. We're gonna be there to guide them all along the process. So, one way to think about strategic planning versus comprehensive planning, I'm gonna use an example. A comprehensive plan may call for complete streets. That's a policy that the North Carolina Department of Transportation recently instituted. And it basically says if they're gonna do a road project in an area, and say they're in one of those more urban areas, we might want a sidewalk to connect with the city of Asheville sidewalk system. Doesn't necessarily make sense in a more rural area, but it's there if we need it. A standalone plan would call for sidewalks to be constructed on specific corridors. And a strategic plan would call for the expenditure of funds to construct a sidewalk in the identified area. The point being, they all need each other. They all sort of interrelate, and they all form a basis to evaluate requests.
Nathan, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So we just recently approved a connection of the bridge on Smokey Park to Sandy Hill Road that included the complete streets design, right? So just for future thinking, I'm thinking of, you said to connect to the city of Asheville's sidewalk system. So located very close to, just right across the street from the bridge, it's incomplete connections of that sidewalk system from Exit 44, okay, to the anchor red light. So as we, as we look at this planning, could you just put a a reminder to get with the city so that we can see where we need to place the urgency on working with them and, you know, them prioritizing and completing some areas since we're gonna be doing some of this?
Absolutely. And I think you'll like what I'm gonna say, because that is, transportation is absolutely a component of the comprehensive plan, and one of those components would also include multimodal to make sure we pick up those critical connections where the county and the former ETJ, where it makes sense to have those urban connections and provide people not just an automobile connection.
So in the area that specifically speaking of is not in the ETJ. It is in the city, and it has sidewalks that I think were completed by the businesses as a requirement of the city.
Right.
Okay. And so because of that, you have gaps, you know, there. And if people want to be, coming across that red light, walking to school, then they need to be able to have some of those connections. So it might be something to be, to have a conversation pretty soon with the city.
Definitely. We plan to definitely reach out to all six municipalities to look at this more from just, not just a city-by-city or a county approach, but more of a regional approach since we are where we are in the state of town.
Thanks.
The other thing to mention is that as we move forward with 160D, which is North Carolina General Statutes, basically is combining all the enabling legislation for cities and counties into one document. You're gonna see a number of text amendments moving forward to this effect, but it actually does require a comprehensive plan. We do meet that requirement, but we are quickly outgrowing our current plan. So the time is now to really have this conversation. You're seeing a number of passionate challenges. Also, passionate conversations come out in the public hearings. This is a way to sort of evaluate what our needs are in a wholesome plan. And we've never had a true comprehensive plan, although we have had a comprehensive land use plan. Next slide. Scope. These are just some of the components that you might see in a comprehensive plan. Now, because this is a public process, we will have multiple, multiple sessions that we're going to outline, especially when we ask the consultants to outline specifically what their plan would be for community engagement. Instead of just listening to concerns, we plan on a traveling road show to go to all corners of the county to listen to what the concerns are in our area. So we want to make sure that we plan for the rural needs of Sandy Mosh and the more urban needs of them. So these are scope for now. These are some of the components. But obviously, in coordination with the public, in coordination with you all as elected officials, we can refine these. This is our vision, our plan. Next. The request for proposal will include, we ask that the consultant provide us a number of tasks they're gonna have to work on. They're gonna work with us on that citizen engagement part. There'll be numerous public meetings. There'll be close coordination with the planning board, and I've gotta tell you, they're really excited about this process. We just met with them on Monday. And out of that, come suggested policies and strategies. It's not a document of regulations. What it does is it influences our ability to then create standards and regulations from this plan. Now, and the most important part is, you always consider our previous plans, because they're a goldmine in terms of where we are, and they help us form the basis of where we need to be now and in the future. Next slide. Timeline. So we're at that part where we've been sort of working in the background to come up with all the parts that need to move forward. So the request itself doesn't come until part of the budget process, which we're in now, which technically would not occur until July 1st. But at this point, we are asking to let the RFP, see what we get back. And then the most important part on this slide is to look at the portions in yellow, and there will be numerous chances for public input throughout this process. That actually concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions. All right, thanks, Nathan.
Do you have an approximate cost to the RFP?
We have budgeted for $400,000. We will know more once we let the RFP and see what it comes back to us.
Will that come back to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Two questions. One is, I'm excited about the public engagement components of this and was really inspired by what we were able to achieve through the strategic planning process with the number of ways community members could take part, but also the range of ways, and hope that can kind of be a foundation for how we plan this part of the process. This is certainly an issue that I hear about one way or another pretty much every time I talk with folks. They may not call it a comprehensive land use plan, but they're talking about the kind of issues that come up here. So that's one thing. And I guess the other one, which I just want to sort of float, is that I'm excited to see this moving forward on the timeline that's projected here, and also would anticipate that between now and the completion of this, we might see some larger projects come forward. And just want to, maybe we can think through in some of our pre-meetings or other discussions, some opportunities that might exist for us to to address those informed by what we're learning as we move through this process and with an eye towards where this process will take us. So certainly want to respect this process, but also know that there's a lot in the pipeline right now that might, that we might need to address or BOA or Planning Board might need to be addressing between now and then. I would, not necessarily now, but at some point, love to hear the staff's perspective on that and certainly the perspective of other commissioners on that.
Nate, the question I have is, how will we fit the municipalities in the county? How do we interface with them during this process?
Well, that's a great question, Commissioner Whitesides. I think that we have to specifically look, and we've actually asked in the RFP that we take a very close look at the former ETJ areas, because those do represent the more urban areas. I mean, there's been a lot of change since like the original 1998 plan. You've had a sea change of annexation law, enabling legislation. Asheville, of course, has never been able, for a very long time, able to exercise differential water rates, whereas a place like Weaverville can. So Weaverville actually has more of a carrot and stick. So I think we have a lot of challenges here that we're just gonna have to work through and see what works best for us. But at the same time, we can't just look at it from the perspective of an overall urban approach. We have to realize that we're a very rural county still. And we had a very good conversation with the National Forest Service. We talked about things like ways to provide for things that the residents will be excited about. The Forest Services, they're under immense pressure from just, they're so popular. So what are ways, maybe through like the Fonte Flora Trail, to provide a relief valve? A way that residents can get excited about a greenway just as much as tourists can? I mean, if you look at the Swamp Rabbit, the Virginia Creeper. I mean, these are things that aren't just a tourist draw. They're a resident draw. So I think that we should definitely be very careful with how we study it, because we do have complex issues that we have to work through that other main street communities don't have. But at the same time, those main street communities would thirst for the things that they see as blessings here, and that's tourism. And at the same time, you know, it's a very careful balance of how do we balance that seesaw of the needs of the citizenry, the residents, infrastructure, development community, tourists, and our services? We've got just as many people coming here to Asheville to go to the hospitals, higher education institutions. I mean, we're a regional hub itself.
Thanks.
Great. So no funding is being committed tonight. We're just simply going out to request the RFP so it'll come back and we'll get a sense for, you know, how much will this cost to go through this process and make the budget decisions at that time. So no financial commitments tonight, but just, this is more of like a, I mean, I think this is something the staff can probably have done on their own, but I appreciate you bringing it to the commission, just because it's an important topic and I think it's something that we want to make sure the community understands that we're looking at this process and kind of starting the wheels turning on it. But with, you know, we're not at the point yet where we have to commit any specific funds to it. But I'm, I'll just chime in. I mean, I'm glad we're doing this. I think it's, I think it's one of the things the community is really looking to us to, you know, to focus on. We're, you know, we're growing at, you know, about 1% per year. We're adding several thousand new residents to our county every year, which means that over the next, you know, 20 years, we're gonna probably add another 50,000 people to our population. It's gonna be like dropping another, you know, not quite the size of Asheville, but another, you know, group of people almost in that neighborhood into our county. So I think one of our primary responsibilities is about how we're gonna, we know we're gonna have growth, but we can help shape it, and that'll have a big impact on whether we can help keep the things we really love about this place for the future, as well as address the challenges of affordable housing and things like that along the way. So I think it's an important conversation and focus. I appreciate the heads up that, you know, this process is being looked at. I think the staff are looking for a motion to approve the release of a request for RFPs so we can begin reviewing that.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second. You know, this is the last item in our new business. We will take public comment immediately following this. So not on this item, but if people want to comment on this, you'll have a chance to do that in the public comment in just a moment. All in favor of the motion?
What? I've got a public comment.
We're not gonna take public comment on this specific item, but we're about to have public comment. So if you want to do that, you can do that when we take general public comment in just, in just like one minute.
So, Nate, another question, sorry. So when we look at a comprehensive plan, and this is gonna help us make, this is gonna help us kind of have infrastructure discussions and some of the discussions that we have that I hear all the time. And this is gonna allow us to stay in some, I mean, sidewalks is one of the, you know, it's a big discussion out in the community. And so that's gonna allow us to be able to know what areas need, what service, and then how we plan for those things.
Right. I mean, one of the, one example is I know Metropolitan Sewers District is very excited to work with us on future planning, right? Now, like the city of Asheville, other water providers, even MSD, they don't speculatively extend service lines. It's usually on a per-event basis or development basis. So they want to become our partner. I think we've got any number of regional organizations like the NC DOT. Obviously, they've had that complete streets change. That's been huge. And it's a win-win, because if they ever do a road project, they will build a sidewalk section if we request it, and if we identify in a plan that we needed in that area, it helps make more informed decisions, because it provides the basis for what we should be asking for or how we move forward and build and what areas that need to be prioritized in the future and what, say, maybe even what density, like if you look out in Swananoa, what's happening in East Haven across from Ingalls. You know, we've done some small things in terms of incentivizing density through, like, say, the community ordinance and development. We can do much more through a comprehensive plan that guides us forward on how to set forth those standards and regulations.
I just want to make sure we're connecting the dots, whether those dots are with Weaverville or they're with the city of Asheville. I was in Johnston School Road, deep review, you know, some of those areas, you know, this past weekend. I was in Johnston School Road, Deverview, you know, some of those areas, you know, this past weekend. And, you know, I'm wondering while we're, you know, we're, some of these areas, we're going to have to connect the dots with sidewalks or whatever it might be. And, you know, some of that might be, the county might want to do that, I don't know. But I'd like to know from the city perspective for how they're doing that as we look at these, at the comprehensive.
No, it's a very good point. In fact, I'm going to just use one example if you don't mind of Emma. It's the legacy of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. If you did a project out there, you weren't in the city limits, but you had to build a city standard. So you might, you know, ride out New Lester Highway and go, why is there just a section of sidewalk built there and it's not connected to anything else? With the ETJ gone, we have to really look. Because you've got services like back to Emma, you've got a bus service running out there. You've got a small node, that area might benefit from a small area plan, just like Swannanoa, just like Camden. I mean, you've got these small areas that have so much potential. And it's right, you're right, you're connecting the dots on the legacy of something that doesn't exist anymore. And where as we continue to urbanize, it's going to be critical for us to make sure that we capture things like that, so they don't fall through the cracks.
Yeah, I mean, you know that the ETJ is gone.
Right.
And so, Camden can't throw their hands up, City can't throw their hands up. We've got to deal with it and plan forward and try to connect the dots. So I just want to leave it there and hopefully we get some good information moving forward.
And I did want to add, I talked to Planning Director out in Black Mountain the other day and she said, "We're built out, getting to the point where we're built out." And you look in the City of Asheville, we're really starting to see the effects of the urbanizing into the county.
One thing I want to mention is, I don't think we've stressed enough, and I apologize Nate, about the conservation and the farmland protection that this allows us to dig in and look at as well. I mean, I think we've continued to talk about growth and development because those are really on the forefront of our minds. But this does give us the opportunity to dig in and look at that farmland that we want to protect and specific areas that we want to conserve. And to speak to that point of Black Mountain, also better utilizing what has already been developed in our county. Will it dig in and take?
Yes, we would ask for a robust environmental component that really, you know, we've done things in the past, like, you know, just a few years ago, we were conserving large swaths of both steep slope areas through Conservation Eastons. We continue to do it through the Land Conservation Advisory Board and the Ag Board. So we're building out more of that basis, more of our areas. Hey, these are really focus areas that we're going to focus on, we're going to look to, we're going to connect to.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you Nate. All right, we've already decided to defer the board appointments. So if you have any questions, you can do public comment.
Mr. Chair, can I just speak on board appointments just for a second? Just want to confirm the next week on the 10th that we talked about at the last, at the end of last meeting, are we going to have the interviews for the boards that we put off? During the last meeting, it was, I think it was four boards, approximately about 14 individuals that the board were considering interviews for.
On Tuesday the 10th?
Yes. Is that still starting at one?
That works for me. Tuesday the 10th, 14.
All right, well, look for email with the confirmation times.
Thank you. All right, we are at public comment. So any folks who wish to speak to the board, now's your chance to do so. And you'll have three minutes. You'll get an orange light when you've got 30 seconds left, a red light when your time is up. And when you get the red light, please do, hold your comments there. We want to give everyone the same amount of time. So Mr. Yelich, would you like to go first?
I've already taken care of it. $12, $20 million you're going to save, you know my thoughts on that. I want to remind you of what I heard here today. An oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and of North Carolina. And it did not say, "I will insert my personal preferences into that." And you know, that also means you listen to the people that elect you. Tom Sobel let public comment be made before every vote was taken. And for someone that's running for reelection, Brandon, I think you better start doing that because you're shutting people off. Because on this development thing, yeah, I'm all for it. I worked on the area-wide 208 Water Quality Management Plan for the region B Council at Askey. And yes, every tree you cut and every road you put down in the Swannanoa Valley, guess what it does? It increases the level of the flood in Biltmore. That's why you need comprehensive principles. But each holler in each valley is different. So you can establish the principles and the criteria and you ought to be smiling for this, Brandon, because it lets you have flexibility for each site and maximize the potential for the development of that site. That's what it does. And I would like to make the recommendation that the first thing you do is establish definitions. Carrying capacity. How many of you up there know what carrying capacity means? I can give you a long detailed explanation because I've got degrees out the wazoo. But it's exactly like putting a thousand head of cattle on an acre of ground. What do you get? Dead cows and cow crap and mud. That's what happens when you exceed the carrying capacity of Hominy Valley or of Emma or of Asheville. And when you do infill and build every valley in the City of Asheville, you lose land that soaks up water. So yeah, you'd need a comprehensive plan, but it needs to establish criteria. Because right now, the state's looking at saying things that can't be done in counties. And the people are already complaining, saying, "You can't establish a rule in Raleigh that applies all over North Carolina." You can't. And you can't establish a rule here that applies all over Bunkin County. Because when you implement that rule and that principle on site, you're going to have to change it and adapt it to that site using sound, scientific principles. That's why Brandon, I keep asking you, come to the house. I'm asking you again. You need to come and I'll perfect on the time.
All right, good job, Don. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Don is right on it. Don and I were here back in 1998 when this thing started anyway. You're here to pay for them. One of the big things was that they talked about the city having the big UTO, UTO plan and this thing, I mean, that book looked like this, you know what I'm saying? And the county commissioners, just like you bunch up there, "Oh, this ain't going to happen. This ain't going to happen to us, we ain't going to do that. We just got a little bit." And they showed a little pack of papers about this being, you ever looked at it lately? You know, you tell one lie and you get more. This UTO thing is significant. Look what this impact the people in the city, what they can do and can't do. You look at the impact on it. Look at the affordability of houses. Raleigh is considering this, that Don is talking about, I sent him the article. Let, later is looking in committee right now. What I want to know, are you trying to get ahead of something? Is your planner trying to get ahead of something that's coming out of Raleigh? Well, sometimes it might be good, sometimes it might not. But $400,000 ain't nothing to sneeze on. That's a lot of money. Here's the other thing. How much is going to be impacting the affordability of houses on all this permitting that's going to be going out once this plan is brought to fruition? You're impacting right now the residents that can't even afford to live here. I'm talking about the local people. These people that's coming in here from all these other states and places, they can afford to come. What you're doing with this comprehensive plan is going to be exactly what you've talked about in the lip service anyway, to try to do to afford housing for people. You can't talk out one side of your mouth and do something out the other side. That's not, don't work good. It'll catch up with you. And that's what's happening right now. The 1998 plan that I saw come into existence, all the things that was said about that is exactly what's happening now. Who's profiting from this? It's the big developers and people that can afford it, not the people that need to live. All these things that we're talking about in development, we're talking about some serious issues related to the environment. What do we have in all the schools, a lot of schools built on contaminated places? Huh? What about the ones that's on the waterway? What about the land that we're using? It's the most filthiest land you can find in the county, but we use it for public youth. That is pathetic. It's the rich people that's getting profit here, it's not the poor people.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rice. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Sharon Several. I'm on the Asheville Urban Forestry Commission. I'm also on the Tree Protection Task Force. And when I was sent this comp plan through the email, I was very excited to see it. What's going on with us on the Urban Forestry Commission is we're getting a lot of calls and people coming to us asking about county ordinances, about county development, about trees, and what the county will save and what they won't do. So I've started wading through your MUNICode and I have found that there is a lot of need for development and saving existing trees and planning for trees in development on the property in the development. And I find that lacking in what I have seen so far and what little I've gone through. Having sat on the Technical Review Committee for the City of Asheville, it's daunting and it's challenging. And I admire you for taking up this big task. And I look forward to public comment during this time and hopefully I can give you some help. So thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, he wants to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, just come on. And Don, you can follow him.
Good evening, people. I'm glad I came, Commissioners, General Public. And I think I just met some fusion orgs in here. Appreciate your comments. As a, my name is Robert Hardy. I'm president of the Southside Organization. As a remnant believer, I first have to raise my right hand and tell you, I'm speaking to you first out of Psalm 51 that says, "I'm nothing but a sinner." The second critical mass statement I need to make is out of Titus 1:2, which says, "I worship a God that cannot lie and that he's promised eternal life." And the last and third scriptural quote I want you to get is Ezekiel 3, 17 through 21. And that says, "I'm not up here trying to get any reward from you or save myself." It's a very selfish thing, is that I'm committed to warn you that you're doing wrong. Four topics I want to speak of. Number one, I found out tonight that city and county governments are delicately interwoven. I attended a meeting at Kenilworth Presbyterian Church about a year and a half ago. And question was said that even wealthy people who own their homes in Kenilworth because of the tax increases, once they start living off of a set income, could not afford to sustain their homes. I've talked to people who are working, who live in Kenilworth, they said, "Once they retire, they'll have to leave Asheville because they can't afford to live here." And the mayor put it on the county, say, "You guys are in control of the taxes. They have nothing to do with it." The first step, there are four things I want to bring to your attention. And I say that because I said it was interwoven. So I don't know if it's something that is pertinent to you, take it. If it's not pertinent, don't take it. In other words, if the shoe fits where it. Okay, number one, I'm against the spending of any more money on the civic center unless it can be shown how the public will profit. I first said benefit, but then I heard you saying something about tourism and all that. So somebody may benefit, but what we profit for? Did we profit when it was United Cellular Center? Would we profit? Some gentleman just got through, bringing to my attention that we are a regional hub. All right, thank you, don't worry, I'll be back.
They're probably here every Tuesday. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, I'm Dawn Chavez. I'm the Executive Director of Asheville Greenworks. I also am a member of the Urban Forestry Commission of the City of Asheville. And Greenworks also houses the Tree Protection Task Force for the county and the City of Asheville. Just want to echo Sharon Several's comments earlier about tree protection. We, Asheville Greenworks works throughout the county and we get a lot of calls about trees being removed and not replaced and trees not being protected. And most times just have to say, "I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do about it." So definitely need to include in the development of a comprehensive plan, land use, planning, and tree protection, and just a plan for it. And to integrate this plan with other plans in the region that have been developed in the past, with Asheville's comprehensive plan, including climate resiliency, green infrastructure for sustainability, and connecting the different municipalities and communities. And also a request that we include in the criteria for the RFP that the contractor have experience working with integrating sustainability into plans and of course, working with communities. I think that $400,000 is not unreasonable for a plan of this size and I think it might even need to be more than that. There's, it's a big undertaking to come up with a comprehensive plan for our entire county. And thank you for approving this first step in the process.
All right, thanks, Tom. Anyone else? All right, I've got a couple of announcements. The next meeting of the Bunkin County Commissioners, we will hold our pre meeting on March 17th at 3:00 PM at 200 College Street, Room 326. And then that same day at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold our regular meeting at 200 College Street here on the third floor in Room 326. We do have an E-Book closed session. Ms. Hockaday, could you tell us about the reason for it?
Thank you. We need to have a motion for a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318,111A3 to consult with an attorney retained by the public body to discuss legal matters. It's not associated with any legal case today.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do not expect to take any action when we return from the closed session. We will simply go back into open session and then adjourn meeting.